Good evening from Tom Smith Auditorium on the campus of Catawba College and welcome to tonight's Candidates Forum. I'm Michael Bitzer, Professor of Politics and History at Catawba and moderator of tonight's forum which is sponsored by Catawba College, the Rowan County Chamber of Commerce, the Salisbury Post, and WSAT who will rebroadcast this forum along with being rebroadcast on Access 16. Tonight's forum features the candidates vying for the three nomination spots for the Republican Party for the general election to the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. The six candidates are, in alphabetical order, Greg Eds, Jim Green, Michael Julian, Judy Klusman, Craig Pierce, and Jim Sads. We are also very pleased to have an audience with us tonight. I've asked them, and they have agreed, to the condition that they remain silent for the remainder of the forum, except for right now when I ask them to join me in welcoming The format for the forum is a presentation of a series of questions with all candidates having two minutes to respond to each question. All candidates will have the opportunity to present introductory and concluding remarks for two minutes as well. They may use their time however they see fit. Each candidate can keep track of their time with a clock positioned in front of us and at the two-minute mark I will ask for time. Several of the questions for the candidates tonight come from the readers of the Salisbury Post. No one has seen the questions selected other than myself. The questions will be rotated among the candidates as to who goes first. We will begin tonight with a two-minute introduction by all the candidates, starting in alphabetical order, so we will start with Mr. Eds.
Well, good evening. My sincere thanks to everyone for being here tonight. Four years ago, I ran for a couple of big reasons. First, I didn't see anything in place that resembled a comprehensive, logical vision to make things better for the people of Rowan County. Today, we have a plan. Second, I didn't believe that fighting amongst ourselves and other elected boards was looked upon favorably by outside investors and those who have the power to bring jobs and investment to our community. In fact, it was driving investors away. Since 2015, they've told us over and over and over again that they will not invest dollars where controversy creates additional investment risk. That's basic investment 101. Everyone in this room understands that. You told us to stop the fighting, and we did. You told us to respect you and represent you well to the region, to our state, and to the world, and we've worked hard to do that. You told us to come up with a plan to make things better, and we did, and things are getting better. To pretend otherwise is to deny reality. To be sure, we've made mistakes. I've made mistakes. I told you that we would, but we are working very hard to represent you, all of you, very well. We're not just working to eliminate the negative, but we're working hard at building a new, positive Rowan County, working with elected officials in every municipality. Last year, every Rowan municipality voted to support and work with one another, get in the same boat and paddle together in the same direction. That's pretty radical, isn't it? Those votes were strategic, and we're seeing the positive results as we witness our municipalities supporting each other and cheering on the successes of one another. There is still much to do, and we'll discuss that positive vision tonight, so thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. We thank you for your time to be with us. My name is Jim Green, and I'm proud to be a graduate of Catawba College and having them host us tonight. I'm running for reelection to the Board of Commission. I ran Green Insurance Agency here for 35 years and merged with another agency in 2012 to form Fisher Green Insurance. I've been a member of the Salisbury Symphony Club for 41 years, worked in my church most all my adult life. My wife and Karen and I have been married for 30 years. I have three children, eight grandchildren. To say the least, I have deep roots in Rowan County. Tonight, you will hear from all the candidates about their knowledge about the county and possible information about the Board of Commission. But I want you to listen, not to the statistics, but each candidate's view of what Rowan County will become. There's never been a greater dichotomy of candidates. When I came into the Board, there was great strife between the Board of Commission and Salisbury, and municipalities hadn't been visited in years. We had just finished a lawsuit between the Rowan Salisbury School System and Board of Commissioners, and there was little activity of recruiting jobs. When the new group of three joined the Board, we had few commonalities. Greg and I had been competitors for years, and Judy had only recently moved to Rowan County. But what we did know was respect for our citizens and each other. We took over leadership and directed a new course for the county. Decide for yourself if you seek this new direction or an old course of failed views and more strife.
Good afternoon. My name's Michael Julian, and I'm a lifelong resident of Rowan County, graduate of North Rowan High School and Catawba College. Two years ago, I ran for the school board, which has been a passion of mine for years. I've worked with the school system over the years, trying to mentor students to help them to become better adults in their lives. I seek a new direction for the Rowan County Commission, not an old direction. I want to move this county forward, move it to a better place. I want to make it a place that our college students want to come back home to. I have two daughters that are in college today, and both of them tell me that they don't know that they want to come back to Rowan County because there's nothing here for them, and I want to change that. As a member of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners, I seek to move this county forward. I want to make our school system better. I want to work with the school board to help our teachers to learn to teach again and to be the teachers that I know they can be. We have lots of good teachers. I want to recruit jobs and bring candidates back, bring businesses back to this Rowan County, and make it a great place that I know it can be. I hope you can vote for me on May 8th.
Hi there. I'm Judy Klusman, and I am the new kid up here. Been here 10 years now. I'm a farm kid with home in Wisconsin, so actually Jim Green and I have a lot in common there. And it is interesting how relationships and trust have grown over the last four years. I have enjoyed working with both of them very, very much, as well as Commissioner Caskey and Commissioner Pierce, and I'm hoping that we can keep this team together. Four years ago, I promised that I would bring bold, positive leadership to Rowan County, and I believe that I have done that. I believe that I am a true public servant who is open to speaking and listening, listening is the important part, to people and their concerns, no matter where they live, no matter if it's Pool Town, or Montella, or Enochville, or parts unknown. Rowan County is a great place to live, and I fell in love with it when I moved here 10 years ago. I would like to thank all of those who helped me get into office four years ago. I have enjoyed serving the people of Rowan very, very much. It has been an honor and a privilege, and one that I hope I can continue. I wish to continue because I do enjoy serving all of the people of Rowan, all of municipalities. Positive leadership is bringing Rowan new businesses with good-paying jobs and benefits. Positive leadership is spending your money wisely while making investments in our future. Positive leadership means working collaboratively, cooperatively, and commuting with all partners, public and private. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm Craig Pierce, that guy you've been seeing in the paper now for about the last month. First of all, let's clear up a few things. There's no way that I would ever have two seats for running this time. That's against the law, and the Board of Elections would have never let me run to start with if that was my intent. What I'm asking for is four more years so that I can finish what I've been working on for the past six years, which is a water and sewer program for the I-85 corridor. We were fortunate enough to have Duke Power step up and pay for the water line in the northern part of the county, which gave us a shot in the arm to finish up the southern end of the county, but there's still a lot of work to do, and it cannot be accomplished in my current term of two more years. So I decided it was time to do some smart thinking and go ahead and run for another four-year term. If that happens, then I can finish what I've told the citizens of Rowan County I would do for the past two election cycles, and I'm asking you to let me have that time to do what I said I would do for you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Vote Craig Pierce, May 8th.
Thank all of you for being here tonight. My name's Jim Sads, and I do want to be one of your Rowan County Commissioners. Over the last two weeks, I've been prompted by others to examine my motives and my methods on how I would desire to get there. Through this time of soul-searching, I've come to this conclusion: whether I make it through this primary election or whether I don't, I'll do my best to retain my honor and integrity. No more will I lash out at those who desire to malign my character with lies and innuendos and misinformation via print media, radio ads, and mail-out cards. I want to publicly apologize to all for the one recent transgression and ask for your forgiveness. I sent out an email that I never should have sent out. Without openly naming the individuals whom I know to have contributed to this false ad campaign, I've added each one of those names to my daily prayer list. What I have to say about them, I'll say to God every morning on my knees. It's my faith in God, my belief in the Lord Jesus Christ as my Savior, my love for my family and friends that's placed me on this journey. I will not further embarrass them by lowering myself to the same level as my accusers. I encourage every one of you to go out and vote on May the 8th and vote for the candidates of your choice.
Thank you. We'll start our first question with Mr. Green. This comes from a reader of the Salisbury Post. Was the county's purchase of the West End Plaza a wise or necessary use of taxpayers' monies? And if you believe it was a wise use, what is your plan for further developing the West End Plaza? Mr. Green?
I was not on the Board when the West End Plaza was purchased, and, quite frankly, we're trying to do all that we can to make this purchase something that's going to be good for the county. The county does have to plan on a long-term basis for different changes, one of those believing that the DSS will need more room, the Health Department will need more room in the future, and the plan was that we would expand there. The problem is that that's expensive. When we purchased the building, the building needed a new roof. Part of it needed to be roofed immediately. We set out, and we did that. It's expensive. If we move DSS and the Health Department, then we may have to move the Sheriff's Department in there. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars. So in the long run, it may not be in the terms that I serve, but it may end up being enough to save us millions of dollars in the long run. But we have to do much planning at the mall or the West End Plaza, and we have to do it wisely because we just don't have the millions of dollars to do everything right now that we would like to do to it. And besides, the Health Department and DSS have not been complaining about room, so there's no reason to spend 15, 20 million dollars just to give them a different place to have people come to.
Thank you. Mr. Julian?
Well, the West End Plaza's been one of my main things that I've been speaking about everywhere I go. When the building was purchased from the previous Board, I was kind of upset about it, as many other people were, that's probably in this room. I thought it was a bad purchase, but after I sat back and gathered some information and looked at the information that the Board was presented with and the price that was paid for, the county got a heck of a deal. With the 330,000 square feet, it was pennies on the dollar. The building was purchased with the intent of moving DSS and the Health Department to the facility West End Plaza. The current Board, once they took office, canceled contracts that were already in place from the previous Board, costing the county tax dollars. And five years ago, or 2000, I forget the date exactly, the economy tank, we were serving approximately 17,000 people a month at the Health Department and DSS. That number ballooned to almost 40,000 people a month. You can't get into the Health Department and DSS during the week. Just drive by there, the parking lot's space full. So DSS and the Health Department need space. They may not be complaining about the space, but they need the space. And it was presented to the taxpayers that it was going to be a mixed-use facility. If we put 40,000 people a month at the West End Plaza, there'll be a need for other restaurants, and there'll be a need for private enterprise to go in out there, which will bring revenue to the county.
Question?
Well, the West End Plaza is a challenge. When it was first purchased, my recollection is correct, it wasn't going to take but a million dollars to fix the roof. Well, it took 3 million. We would like to update the new event center, which is the old J.C. Penney building, and we didn't think that would be very much either, and it's over a million dollars just for the bathrooms. Now, serving on the Social Services and Public Health Boards, I will tell you that yes, those departments would very much like to move out there as soon as possible, but it's going to take between 15 and 20 million dollars to move them out there. That's how much. And I, as one of your current Commissioners, am not willing to raise your taxes now to do it immediately. We've been working really hard to increase the tax base in this county, and we will continue to. And when the money is there, then we will make those moves. It's no different than trying to balance your own family's budget. You can't spend dollars out of your checking account that you don't have. Now, about the broken lease, well, not lease, contract, excuse me. We did break a contract with a specific contractor at the very beginning, and it was because we were not satisfied with the work that was being done. We settled with that particular contractor for $30,000, and then we went on to hire the expertise that we needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce?
Well, I was on the Board when we bought the West End Plaza. It's the best thing we've ever done. A lot of people would disagree, but what they've got to understand is 330,000 square feet for 3.4 million dollars calculated to about $10 a square foot, not counting 19 acres of parking, not counting another million dollars that came in with leases that were already signed that were being paid by J.C. Penney as well as Belk, so the actual cost for us is under $2.5 million. We had everything lined up to go ahead and do the upfits that we felt were necessary because the new leadership came in and canceled its contracts, which cost $61,000. It has also ballooned the cost of any repairs that we do because at that particular time the economy was down, labor prices were cheaper, material costs were down. Now that the economy has picked up nationwide, concrete has doubled in price, all the labors that we get contract figures on now have doubled in price, so because we kicked the can down the road, we've cost the taxpayers a whole lot more money. That's watering out the bridge. What I think we need to do at this point is get a game plan and let's move forward. That's why you pay your tax dollars, is so that we can take care of you. If we're not giving the facilities to our individuals that live in this county to take care of them, then we're not doing our job. Yes, we've got to pay it forward, of course, but we take in enough revenues that if we streamline the expenses that we currently have and quit doing frilly projects that end up doing nothing but spending money, we've got the resources to do whatever we want out there, but we can't do it until this Board gets an inclusive mind on how we want to move forward and pulls the trigger and starts doing some things.
Mr. Sads?
When the county Commissioners voted to buy the West End Plaza, the Board's intent was to save the county money by meeting current and future space needs, by upfitting the mall buildings, reviving construction. If you remember back then, we were being given figures by the school system of $108 million in capital needs. That's grown to over $208 million in capital needs. The county also has capital needs. We need space for our employees. By placing county government functions in that area of the county, we not only would keep the mall from going down, but we would revitalize that area of the county where very little has been done in the West End. The arguments for purchasing the mall were much greater than the arguments against purchasing. Plans were to move the Veterans Service Office, the Board of Elections to the mall shortly after the purchase, and then develop plans for moving the Department of Social Services and the Health Department. And if you understand the space needs of the county, the sheriff needs more space, we've got probation officers that we have to pay for their offices, we're paying over $100,000 in rent. We could put them out at the West End Plaza, or we could put them over at the Health Department building and the DSS building. Once new members were elected to Board in 2014, these plans were delayed. Changes were made. Those changes and those delays have kept the West End Plaza from being developed to its fullest potential. I believe that the West End Plaza should be developed by the county to fully utilize the 320,000 square feet of space. Much of that space would be occupied by county departments. Other space could be used by nonprofits, educational organizations, and even some of it leased to private businesses. K&amp;W Cafeteria owns their building, but if they leave, we own the building. They pay over $100,000 a year on rent.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Eds?
You know, I thought purchasing the mall was a good idea. We did a master plan that showed that. The mix of moving businesses around DSS, Health, Sheriff Department, the courts, I thought it was a good idea. This was such a big issue four years ago. You know, the county and the municipality of City of Salisbury was just torn up over this because of the way the whole thing was done. As these questions were asked to us during the campaign four years ago, I really tried to get folks to redirect and say, listen, yes, we need to make these moves with Sheriff Department, Courts, DSS, and Health Department, but that's half the mall. What are you going to do with the other 200,000 square feet that are left over? What are the things that could transform that facility? What are the things that could transform that side of town and maybe help transform this community? And that's what we really began working on, is trying to figure out in the short run what things could we afford to do that would pay a big dividend. The bottom line is, the number's not 15, or 18, or 20 million dollars. It's a $22 million budget to get DSS and Health Department there, and if you move the others, the courts and the Sheriff Department, it's $28 million. That's the issue. So we're working on short-term, which is repairing roofs and doing all that. I would say there's a lot of prices, there are a lot of numbers that are given out, 58, 61,000, when we canceled a contract. None of that is true. It was 27,000. A penny is too much. The bottom line, there were a lot of things that had to happen before we could do that. We didn't have roof contracts. We had leaking roofs. We couldn't even get into it because the city didn't have the right zoning. We canceled the contracts is the right thing to do. Now, we can move ahead with a good plan.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Mr. Julian. One of the big issues facing Rowan County is the discussion of building a county-wide water and sewer system. Considering other expenses on the horizon, such as the millions needed for West End Plaza, the expansion of the airport, and other capital needs, how do you propose to finance county-wide water and sewer, and how would such an infrastructure improvement be implemented? Mr. Julian?
Well, the finance of county water and sewer, county's in the best financial stability it has been in in years, and I give kudos to the current Board, our state representatives, our president, for some of the things that they've been able to do to help us to get there. Financing the water and sewer project, the water and sewer project will have to turn a profit at day one, once it is put in the ground. So we can't just put it in the ground and hope that it comes. It's not a baseball field where you build it and they will come. We have to be able to turn a profit with it. We can borrow the money and finance it over a 40-year term because of the infrastructure needs. We have, when we run water and sewer down to the southern end of the county, there's a $500 million investment just waiting to take place down there with homes, businesses, and some health facilities possibly on the horizon. So in order to move this county forward and to bring in new industry, we have to have the infrastructure available for them to be able to come here, and one of the first things they ask for is, do we have water and sewer? And only if you're within the municipality of Salisbury, Spencer, a few others out in the 70 corridor, now in the northern corridor, that you have water and sewer. The southern end of the county, there's people that are moving here from Charlotte, from Concord, from other counties that work in Charlotte that are wanting to come here, but some of these housing developments can't go in because they don't have water and sewer because of the conditions of the land. So I think the water and sewer project is one of the main things that we need to get done in order to move the county forward.
Thank you. Next question?
Water and sewer is important, to the east part of our county especially. Right now, all the development's on the west side of I-85, and so fortunately, or unfortunately, Duke Power was willing to work with us as part of their compensation for the coal ash issue and polluting wells on the north end of the county. So we will have a water line that goes to Dukeville, which passes by several sites now that are in development for industrial uses. It is only by having industrial businesses that we can afford to put water and sewer in. You need big users. Unfortunately, subdivisions with homes are not going to bring in the revenue that we need to pay. When we look down south and look at exit 64, the last estimate that I saw was that it was going to cost $25 million with trying to put both sewer and water in. Now, we can't just click our feet together and say, I wish we could do this, because our local government commission in Raleigh says you can only borrow up to this amount as a percentage of what your budget is. We can't deplete our rainy day fund for that. I think that we all found that out in the previous commission, dealt with the crash in 2008, and they were very glad to have that rainy day fund. So I support doing water and sewer, and we'll pay for it as we come.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce?
In my experience of 30 years of construction, one of the main keys that I always had to work with in developing different projects- work with in developing different projects was that we had to have infrastructure. It had to be water, sewer, had to be electric, had to be gas, had to be everything that it takes to make something to be cost-effective for the builder. Right now, we've got everything. We've got an interstate, we've got a big lake down there with plenty of water, we've got natural gas, but we don't have water and sewer. And if we don't put it in, this county is not going to grow. It's going to stay just like it is. And for some people, that's fine. That's what they want. They don't want the growth potential going to the southern and eastern parts of the county. But that's what it's going to take if we're ever going to get out of the doldrums that we're in. I stood in a development 20 years ago on the backside of Concord called Braxton Estates off of Flow Street Road, if you want to look it up. I stood there with three builders and they said, we're going to build 500 houses in here. I said, no, you're not. He said, oh, yeah, we are. I said, well, how you going to do that? He said, you see all them white pipes sticking out of the ground? I said, yes. He said, City of Concord just expanded water and sewer. And within three years, all 500 houses were there. And of course, shopping centers came, grocery stores, pharmacy, gas stations, everything else that goes along with it. So if we're going to grow our county, we need to quit worrying about what we're going to do at High Rock Lake, we need to quit worrying about what we're going to do at all these municipalities. We need to go down there and invest into our county. I don't see how we can ask a developer or an industrial plant to come here and invest into our county if the citizens won't invest to it first. And yes, we can pay for it. It's very simple. The math's there. Won't even have to have a tax increase. All we've got to do is quit diverting monies that are being wasted on special interest projects and put them toward infrastructure for our citizens. If we do that, this whole community, every municipality in this county will receive growth benefit beyond your beliefs. But we've got to take that big step, that we've got to quit telling everybody we can't afford it.
Mr. Sutts.
Completion of the widening project along Interstate 85, addition of that major interchange in the southern part of the county is automatically going to bring major economic growth to our area. Some of that growth will come from businesses, some of it will come from houses residential. Both of those enterprises will need water and sewer. I think the county is wise to be proactive in the effort to provide these services, but they are expensive investments. And the only way that I would ever vote to put it in, to borrow that kind of money, would be if we put it to a vote of the citizens. Water for the northern end of the county is very critical also, but those citizens need it because they were affected by Duke Energy and the contamination problems. The assistance the citizens of this area is late in coming, but it leads its own track for completion in the near future. While this water line will provide much-needed relief for these county residents, it'll also provide for economic development in that general area. I'd remind the citizens of Rowan County that Duke Energy received more than $6 million in incentives from Rowan County over a 10-year period. So the argument that they're paying for this water line extension is almost laughable. They still come away with $3.5 million. They've raised your rate since then, and now understand you're going to have to pay for the coal ash cleanup? How far would that much money have gone to solve the problems of crime in Rowan County and support education in our county? I know I'm not supposed to be negative, everything's supposed to be positive. The fringe you can't hide from the truth. There are problems that we need to address, and incentives are one of those problems. I believe that the incentives that the county ought to offer are the infrastructure, the water and sewer. For years, the county participated in many of those kinds of projects, along with the City of Salisbury. We paid for them, they put them in, and then we turned them over to them. That was a good deal.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Rens.
Water sewer infrastructure is absolutely the lifeline of economic growth. January 2000, maybe February 2015, we had our first planning conference together as a board. It's one of the top items that we identified. We identified that the northern corridor, which was exit 81 along Ferry Road, is our number-one priority, only because Old Beatty Ford Road, the project itself, had not been approved yet. So we moved to where we could affect growth. We had 700 acres of Duke site readiness land up on exit 81, so we naturally went to that area first. It was after we began the planning, and had already begun the planning up there, that the coal ash issue came along, fortunately or unfortunately, as Commissioner Clusman said, and they ended up paying for that as a matter of law. So as we get down to the south end, now the south end, the corridor has been approved, the roads have been approved, we turned our attention to there, we're on a course to do investment in water and sewer down there. You know, if you look at it 10 years from now, there's no worry. That is going to be a boom. We did not go to the mat with DOT and with our legislators and folks over all of these years to try to get Old Beatty Ford Road in there so that folks could just have a better shot out of the county. We did that because we wanted that to be an economic boom for this county, and it won't happen without water and sewer. So how do we do it? We have to do it by develop, the lady that has been working with developers down, or with folks down there, her name's Carolyn Martin, she's a fine lady, we've got to work with her to develop that. We've got to come up with enough houses and industry and businesses that'll pay for that, and that's what we're looking to do, and that's the way to get to paying this.
Thank you. Ms. Green.
All right. Since my wife's here, she'll tell you about how I nitpick things. You asked about countywide water and sewer, and there's, it will be years and years and years before we ever have countywide water and sewer because it is so expensive. First of all, if the county gets in the water business and we have to have a treatment plant, treatment plant is about a half a billion dollars. It'd be between 400 and 500 million dollars. So countywide water and sewer is difficult at best, even when I'm gone. It's going to be expensive to do that. We did put water in up north, we saw a need for that, we started that project before there was such a ruckus with Duke Power about the coal ash. It worked out very well for Duke Power, worked out very well for us to get the line put in, and they paid for it. So if the question was related to the south end, we are trying our best to put water and sewer in there. We did a, we had a study done, and our engineers came back and said in the last year that it was going to cost $21 million for that. We don't have $21 million, so we can do one of two things. We can go out and can get loans on a long-term basis, we can raise your taxes, or we can have tax zones. But regardless of how this gets done, it has to be approved by the LGC, who controls our borrowing and the projects that are done here. So it's not an easy task, but we will get it done. We are, we've already spent $800,000 down there for borrowings underneath 85. So we are very much hopeful that 85, I mean, that we can get water and sewer down there.
Thank you. Our next question will be starting with Ms. Clusman. What can county government do to foster economic development and to generate jobs for Rowan citizens? If it requires incentives to compete with other counties and areas, will you support incentive packages? Ms. Clusman.
Economic development is key for the growth of this county, and I have already supported incentives. It's a game I wish we didn't have to play, but guess what? It's not just local, it's not just the region, it's not just the state, it's the world. And that's what we have to compete against. As far as getting economic development here, we have got a wonderful economic development corporation that is led by Rod Kreider, who is new leadership that has come to us, who is nationally recognized as one of the best, and we are very, very fortunate for that. We also, under the guidance of Jim Green, have started a jobs program, a training program, and helping people to develop basic skills so they can go and apply for a job and fill out that application, dress for success, and nail that interview. We have jobs. We have lots of jobs that are available right now, and our business folks are crying for good employees. Another way that the county is helping to bring jobs to Rowan is that we're working with the Rowan County Community College, Livingstone, Kataba, and our Rowan Salisbury School System. We're bringing training back to the high schools through academies, and so young people can decide earlier what type of education they want to go on in the future. Will it be the trades, to your certification, or for your college? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pierce.
The answer's yes.
The answer's no. Growth that is natural is predicated on investment by those willing to succeed or fail based on their own talents, those willing to take a chance at the American dream. Those types of growth I favor for Rowan County. Growth fostered by the free enterprise system will benefit the county and for many years the citizens. Growth fostered by government manipulation and interference will ultimately cost the county in years to come. With growth comes rewards, but with growth also comes costs. What kind of county do you want to see in 10 years? Do you want another 10,000 houses, another 10,000 low-income residences? Do you want another 15,000, 20,000 cars on the road? Do you want another 25,000 people in the malls and law markets, the places you go to shop and buy groceries? Should you, the citizen, not be the one that makes that choice, or do you want the government to make it for you? When we speak about economic incentives, the only kind I can think of I'm in favor of is the county putting in infrastructure. That's what we ought to be doing. My question is, why are there no incentives for business to come here in Rowan County outside of the taxpayers paying for it? Rowan County has a lot to offer. With the changes along I-85, a longer way to growth will naturally come to Rowan County. Economic development will take care of itself, only if we let it. We can place big signs at great expense along the interstate, welcoming people to Rowan County. We can rebrand and remarket and rename ourselves all we want. We can spend great sums on social media trying to sell ourselves to others. We don't need to be unoriginal, we just need to be ourselves. Rowan County is primed for growth. Growth is coming. We just need to get out of the way. Everyone should be entitled to incentives, or no one should be entitled to incentives.
Thank you. Ms. Rens.
Let me give you an example. I don't think there's anyone up here that loves incentives. The problem, one of the big problems in Rowan County is that we have a problem with tax revenues. If you look at all the counties in our region, we lag behind everybody in tax revenues because Rowan County has not figured out the industrial investment piece. We are building an economy on houses, and you can't do that. So we're working on the industrial side of that. So it is heartbreaking for us to bring, try to bring a business here and to give a standard incentive of 75% of their taxes back to them over five years. It's heartbreaking. But it is that, or we're not in the game. Now, you can wish that that weren't true, you can say that that's not true, you can make up that that's not true, but the fact is, that is the truth. If you want to be part of the game, you've got to be in the incentive game. And so I did just a little math real quickly. You know, we were recently talking with a firm that wanted to invest $200 million in Rowan County. That is, they would pay $1,320,000 a year. We would keep of that $330,000 each year that we didn't have before. I'll take that. But this company also was looking to bring 720 jobs. Is that worth anything? Is the offspring that comes from that and the HVAC services and the houses that are bought and all that, is that worth it? Of course, that's worth it. And after five years, we get that $1,320,000, well, there's going to be depreciation, so I understand that. But we've got to be flexible, we've got to be competitive. There's stuff that we've got to be better at. Until we're the best at everything else we do, the incentives unfortunately are important for Rowan County.
Ms. Green.
Commercial growth is the lifeblood of the community. If you want anything for your community, we have to be able to recruit. Take a $150,000 house at a tax rate of, our current tax rate, 66.22 cents per hundred. That yields about $900 a year in taxes. If we have one student out of that house, we currently pay $2,700 a year for them to go to school. If they have 2.1 children, you do the math. It's $5,000 on a house that brings in $900 to the county. We must have commercial growth to make our community grow and to have the infrastructure that we're talking about here tonight. That's why we can't afford to do it. But we look back four years ago and we saw that we had problems. We had, we had very little inventory of sites for people. Land was not available with water and sewer. We needed an improvement in our recruit, in our recruitment. So we did. We put more money into the EDC. We have, now we have a new head of the EDC, and they have money to do things with. They're doing a great job, and I know in the next four years, they're going to land more jobs for us. Incentives are just a part of doing business today. Nobody likes incentives, but you sit here and wait. Do you really think that growth is natural? Start at Charlotte and come toward Rowan County. Where does the growth stop? Stops at the Cabarrus County line. Go past Rowan County, go to Davidson, start on up 85. Do you see growth up there? Absolutely, you do. Is that a natural pattern? No way is that a natural pattern. So we have done all of these things, and one of the biggest things we had to do was to change our reputation about being business-friendly.
Thank you. Ms. Julian.
So what can the county do to bring jobs to Rowan County? Listen to Mr. Green, and he's, you say, well, Cabarrus County is growing. Why are they growing? They have water and sewer. Look at Davidson County, they're growing. Why are they growing? They have water and sewer. So if we bring water and sewer, we're going to bring the industries that we need in order to put our citizens to work. I don't like incentives, like everyone else up here said. I hate giving back money to business, but it is the game that we have to play. And as Commissioner Ed said, if we have to give them back 50% of what they pass, we're still 50% ahead of where we were before they came. Plus, we have the jobs and the people that are, now have spendable income that are going to go out into the community and spend their money. So we have to bring industry here. It is the lifeblood, and in order to do that, we need the water and sewer. In order to be able to bring businesses here, we also have to have a workforce that is trained and ready to go to work. That is why I'd like to work with the school system in order to have a true career and technical education high school in this county, so that these students sitting here on the second row, they know whether they want to go to college, or whether they want to invest in a career in high school and learn a trade and be able to go to work when they get out of school. Because there are many of our students that don't want to go to college, they want to go to work. I was one of them when I graduated high school. I went to work, I spent 20 years in business before I decided to go back to college. But it is the things that we have to do. So water and sewer, a trainable workforce will bring industries here, which then will be the lifeblood of this county.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Mr. Pierce. A reader of the Salisbury Post wrote in that with more than 40% of Rowan Salisbury school buildings built before World War II, the district has stated that it has in excess of $200 million in current capital needs. How do you propose helping the school system address its capital needs and ensure the education of Rowan students? Mr. Pierce.
There's only one way to do it, and that's grow the tax base. If you don't grow the tax base, you don't have the revenues to build the structures. But I think it falls down to the school board and their administration to be wiser about the locations of these schools. The days of having community schools where everybody walks to school is over. It's just like volunteer fire departments. One of the big things we deal with is, there's nobody there. If the siren goes off, there's no local businesses there to man the fire stations any longer. If the siren goes off, there's no local businesses there to man the fire stations any longer. So, they've had to start paying people. If we're going to develop a comprehensive plan to replace these aging schools buildings, then we need to sit down and look at redistricting and get everything as efficient as possible so that we're not building schools that end up being half-empty. And that's what we're dealing with now. We do have too many schools, but that was back when schools were built in the neighborhood. A great example of what I'm talking about is the consolidation of Cleveland and Woodleaf. Now, in the current Cleveland Elementary School that's being constructed. Yes, it was hard for the residents of Woodleaf to give up their local school, but it's necessary. We can't afford to go out here and spend 35, 40 million dollars per school because we don't have the children that's going to fill it up in those locations unless we bust. So, it's something that I'd be willing to work with the school board on, but they're going to have to bring me a better plan than just say, give me 208 million dollars and I'll go away. We've got, we've got to look at this thing on a long-range plan. I'll be honest with you, I think a 20-year plan is probably where we need to be. One thing that's not talked about a whole lot is our population of school students is declining. We're seeing fewer and fewer and fewer students going to public education. They're going to charter schools, they're going to private schools. So, if that's going to be the business model, then we need to start looking at what we can do to be more efficient with our taxpayer dollars to house our students.
Mr. Sykes.
It's the legislative responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners to provide the capital needs of the school system. I believe the problem here is two-fold. First, the local school system, the school board as a whole, has historically had a problem identifying needs versus wants. Now, I'm not speaking of the current school board, I've not worked with them, don't know what plans they have, but historically, they've had a problem identifying exactly what their needs were. There are schools with vacant seats that could be filled by redistricting or allowing school choice. This would eliminate the need for some of the desired new schools. Other options are available as well, which reduce the amount of capital funds needed in the immediate future. The second problem lies in the amount of local support given to the administrative side of the financial support for the schools. This expense is the responsibility of the state. However, local contributions have grown over the years in this area to the point that this expense is so great on the county that limited resources are left for meeting capital needs. With over $200 million in capital needs, it's unrealistic to think that we could meet all of that at one time. In 2021, there's approximately $5, $6 million in debt service that will be paid off. I believe at that time, we could probably afford a 60 or a 70 million dollar bond issue, and we could meet some of the needs, capital needs of the school system. But first, let me say, I think we ought to address education. I think we ought to address the real need, and it's education. Our school system is failing, and we need to work on the problems within the school system as well as working on the buildings themselves.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds.
Well, first of all, it is not our current school board's fault that buildings were built 100 years ago. There are inefficiencies. We have just witnessed, just weeks ago, what has happened across the country with the death of so many of our children. This isn't something that we can just keep covering up. We have real security needs that we have to deal with. We're going to have to figure out how to do that. Commissioner Pierce and I would agree that the way out of this is not raising taxes. The way out is to grow the pie and make our tax revenues even higher. You know, a couple of years ago, we tried, the school board, want to give them credit, they tried to have a discussion, an honest discussion about school consolidation, and they were soundly shut down in a political, in a horrible political way. We have got to have the courage to have these discussions in our community. To shut folks down is wrong, if you're doing it for your own political enrichment. So, we have to have that discussion, and we support our school board in doing that. $200 million is a steep climb, and I got to say, I've not had any of the school board members come to us and say, when are we going to have 208 million dollars? This is a good school board. It's a school board that most of us wanted to see put in here. They're doing a great job under the leadership of Mr. Wagner and I see Mr. Hunter back there, Susan Cox, and certainly, we support them. As Mr. Sykes said, we have $60 million, I believe, coming available. We'll have to chip away, chip away, chip away at that. But again, I want to thank these guys for being reasonable, being good partners. We're actually sitting down and having positive, fruitful conversations with the school board. Who knew that that could happen?
Thank you. Ms. Green.
As you folks may know, may not know, we are in charge, set by the state, we are charged with providing the physical needs of the schools here. The public schools take up 37.4% of our budget already. That's $55.8 million each year. Many of our schools, as we have talked about before, are close to 100 years old. And we tried to have this discussion. We have 1,000 students less this year than we did last year. Our undercapacity of schools is a problem, and it is a, it is a shame that this community cannot sit down and discuss it. I don't mean accept it, I mean have a discussion about it. Because school, this new school is going to cost us 27, 28 million dollars, whatever it ends up being, and that's an elementary school. By the time you build a middle school, it's another $10 million from that. And Cabarrus County is now spending 50, 60 million dollars on their high schools. Of course, they've got golf practice ranges at their high schools also. So, it's not exactly the same way that we have to build schools here. But the consolidation of Woodleaf and Cleveland, we, they, the Board of Education decided finally on the spot after they were condemned for a couple of places that they were trying to put it. They put it in Cleveland where there was water and sewer readily available, and it made good sense for that. And we're still being, I'm getting phone calls from people I know that, oh, you picked out that site. No, I didn't. The Board of Education picked that site out, but that's another story. But our relationship with the Board of Education is excellent. We have worked to establish a good working relationship with them, and we will do that in the future. This is a hard project. We will have $5 million come available in 2021, and we will try to do some long-term planning at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Jewell.
$200 million worth of capital needs, as everyone says, there's no way we could fund that all at one time. But we've got to do something. It is the county's responsibility to fund the school system. And yes, I am not a proponent of large elementary schools of 800 students. I don't think that it is conducive to learning, but it's something that we're going to have to look at. I just don't think that that is conducive learning environment for our elementary-age students. And high school students, yes. I'm not really sure I have the answers to the questions, but it's something that's going to have to be done. And as a community, and as two boards, we can all come together and come to a good, neutral agreement on what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
Well, we've heard a lot of facts and the numbers, and I think for my part, being on the commission, one of the best things that we have done is rebuilt our relationship with the school board and the school administration. It wasn't that long ago that it seemed that our county commission was really at loggerheads with our school board and administration. And you can't get anything done when it works like that. Well, it's not working. But I want to talk a little bit about how we can make our schools better. We've got a great, solid school board that can work with the commission. They want to. They want to work with other partners, both public and private. And one of the things that my church is doing is working with third graders in Eisenberg Elementary School. And they formed what they call the Gator Reading Club. And after three years, the scores for those children, 60% of them are now at grade-level reading. Now, what happened to the other 40%? Well, if you look before that, it was down to around 10%. So, all of us in the community, I believe, have a responsibility to partner with our schools. Every Monday morning, I go to Kuntz Elementary School and tutor two children there, two little first graders. And I will tell you, some days, I want to pull my hair out. But it is my responsibility, as I believe each citizen who is here and can hear this program tonight, for us to take that hour and help our children and our schools.
Thank you. Our last question before our concluding remarks, we will start with Mr. Sykes and a reader, young reader, to the Salisbury Post sent in the following.
My name is John Burnett. I'm an eighth-grade homeschooler in Rowan County, and I'm in attendance at this debate. My question is, what do you want Rowan County to look like in 10 years from now, right after I've graduated from college? Mr. Sykes.
I'm pretty much happy with the way Rowan County is. We've got a very low unemployment rate. We've got an educational system that definitely needs some work. I'd like to see that improve. I certainly would like to see government agencies have the room that they need to operate. I'd like to see a lot of changes in Rowan County, but I don't want to see such fast growth as what you'd see in Morrisville. I'm sorry, I don't want to see that kind of growth for Rowan County. And I realize a lot of times, I'm in a minority when it comes to that. I want natural growth. I don't want manipulated growth. I believe that we need to let the economy drive the growth for Rowan County, and I think the Interstate 85 is what's going to bring that. I'll do everything that I can as a Rowan County Commissioner to improve your lot in Rowan County, in the educational system, in the government, and everything else. I want you to not have to pay such high taxes. I think it's a shame that we found $15 million in revenue in the last three years, but we haven't given any of it back to the taxpayers. We spent all that money. And I believe in being honest as a politician, if I tell you that I'm going to do something, I ought to do it. When we put in the quarter cent sales tax, we said that it would sunset, that it would pay for only certain services. That money's been used for a lot of other things, and now, nobody even talks about sunsetting it. I think it ought to be given back to the people.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds.
John, that's a great question. I have three kids, John. I've got a 26-year-old daughter who left Salisbury and lives in Charlotte. You guys spent maybe a quarter of a million dollars educating my child. I spent another $100,000 sending her out of state to Liberty University for a four-year degree, and she took all of my money and all of your money, and she went to Charlotte. Think about that. Another daughter that lives up in Lynchburg, I'm not going to complain about that, that's where she got a job. My son, he may be getting the birthright, he's staying right here, and that's a good thing. Everything we talk about is about how do we, how do we stop the brain drain? This is something that's going on all across the country as kids are moving to urban areas. So, John, we want our education to be top-notch. That doesn't happen overnight. We're turning the corner. We're off the low-performing list. We want there to be a great quality of life, and man, we've got a great head start here in Rowan County with the arts and with colleges and parks and recreation. Man, we are the envy of so many communities that wish they had what we have. We spend most of our time denigrating our own selves. That's not natural, it's not healthy. I want to get my kids back here, that's my dream, and I want you to stay here with your parents because you find that there's opportunity. That's why folks are leaving, they're leaving for opportunity. We're working on a program in the mall called the Idea Center. We'll have a youth program in there for kids in their junior and senior in high school. And one thing we found by encouraging entrepreneurship at that age is those kids that are inclined to leave and go to greener pastures, they actually find out that they are the opportunity. John, you're the opportunity, my friend, and I hope you'll return here to create more opportunity for your family and your friends.
Thank you. Ms. Green.
John, thank you for the question. Thank all of you folks that are, don't have gray hair that are here tonight to understand what we're doing. 10 years from now is a pretty long time for somebody like me. I don't even buy real ripe fruit at the house. But from 10 years from now, from 10 years from now, I hope that you graduate from one of the new schools that we get to build for you. I want you to see new companies that come to Rowan County, 21st century jobs. I want you to be making airplanes, and I want you to be making some sort of items that I don't even know about nowadays. We want you to be as highly employed as possible, but you have to do that by educating yourself. You have to do that by taking advantage of the schools here. Take advantage of learning to read, learning math, the basics of all things. You have with your computers and things, you have, you have more knowledge at your hands than half of the world has ever seen now. So, you have a responsibility too, and we want you to be involved like you are to come into this tonight. You may be sitting up here as one of our county commissioners in 10 years, or, let's see, yeah, you can vote, you can do that, so you can run. But it's a, it's a great question, and we thank you for being here tonight, and we just, we want the best for you. I have eight grandkids, and that's what I'm pushing for, is to have a better Rowan County. When we get through this election, if I'm elected, there's one thing that I want to do, and that's to build a park down south. We don't have a park down there now. I'm trying to get that done, so that you don't have to go all the way to Dan Nicholas'. You might live right beside Dan Nicholas', I don't know. But we want, we want great value for you and to get you to stay here in Rowan County.
Thank you. Ms. Jewell.
10 years for a county is just a blink of an eye for a government agency for the world this day in time. In 10 years, I'd like to have high-tech jobs here. As Mr. Green said, you have the world at your fingertips now with your laptop computers. You could be living right here in Rowan County and running a business in Japan. Who knows where the world's going to be? It is getting smaller and smaller all the time, and we have to embrace that. We have to be diversified, and we have to be acceptance of everyone, and that's what we need to do. Because everyone's not alike. If we were all alike, it, the world would be a very boring place. In 10 years, I want to have high-tech jobs here. You may not even have to leave your home in order to go to work in 10 years. As I said, you may be running a company anywhere in the world and living right here. So, we, we have to embrace the world is getting smaller and smaller all the time, and we have to be acceptance. So, I just hope that in 10 years, we've gotten past some of this bickering between the races that we always seem to have, because deep down inside, we're all the same. We have this, a lot of the same ideals and the same wants and the same needs. Seems the difference is, we have different ideals of how to pay for it. But we all need to come together, and I hope in 10 years that the world, we all can live together as one.
Ms. Close.
Well, bravo, John. That is a great question. Thank you for asking it. You know, in 10 years, I hope to see Rowan County with a lot less poor people. We need to work really hard on reducing poverty here. We need to work really hard on helping our county become healthy. And that means we need good-paying jobs with benefits that have health insurance that come with them. In 10 years from now, I hope that you will be excited to come back to Rowan, that you will see a place that you can work and live and play and raise your family and your grandkids. That's what I hope Rowan County is looking like by 10 years from now. I just had two grandbabies two years ago, and, you know, my hopes and dreams for them are... are, the sky's the limit. And I know, raising two sons of my own, that I always told them, that you can be anything you want to be. And now, in this world, you can be anything you want to be, just about anywhere you want to live. And I hope that that place that you want to live is right here in Rowan.
Mr. Piers.
Well, now I know why you're sitting down here on the front row, so we can see you in the square booth. All I can tell you is, I can remember back in the days when I went to NC State, I lived in a dorm room, and we had a diverse amount of people down those hallways, and I convinced them one time to come home with me for the weekend. And one of the biggest things I saw, that because they were from like Ashboro, Siler City, Pittsboro, Gardner, all kind of places, they were just excited about coming to Rowan County. And once they got here, they were just enthused about all the things there were to do. So I hope for you, what ends up happening is, if you do go off to college, that you do come back, and that you'll be proud to tell everybody, "Yes, I'm from Rowan County", and you'll see just the benefit that you've, you've had. You don't realize how great a place this is until you leave it, but once you leave it for a little while, and then you come back home, you're like, "Man, it sure is glad to be back here." So, I hope you, I hope you have that experience, and I'm gonna do everything I can to make that come true for you.
We'll now have concluding remarks, we will start with Mr. Sides and work in reverse alphabetically.
I want to thank you all for being here tonight. We've all heard many ideas tonight from six candidates who want to be your county commissioners for the next four years. I believe all the candidates before you tonight are basically good people with sincere desire to serve the citizens of Rowan County. But having different ideas about how to accomplish that goal is not necessarily a bad thing. In fact, I believe that some conflict in decision-making is healthy. The choice is now pretty much in the hands of the voters. If you care about your county, please go out and vote. I understand that voter turnout's been rejected to be around eighteen percent. I remember going to a class that Mr. Bitzer taught years ago, that told how there was something like a seventeen percent rule, or, you know, something like that. But if eighteen percent of the people turn out to vote, that means less than ten percent determine who runs the county for the next four years. How sad it is that so few people within just a few hours of this time, next week, will have decided who the leaders of this county will be. All citizens will live with that decision for the next four years. I urge everyone to call your friends, call your family, call your neighbors, call your enemies, anybody else you can think of, tell them to go out and vote, exercise their right. What a great country we live in, what a great privilege we have to be able to vote and decide who will represent us in our government. And what a great country we have where anybody with very little education can run for a political office and be a leader in their community. My prayer is that God will bless you as you make your choice in the voting booth between now and May the eighth.
Mr. Piers.
Well, I said from the start, my whole reason for running is water and sewer, and if you didn't hear that tonight, I don't know where you've been, because that's all we've talked about. I started that project six years ago, one of the reasons that Duke Power was able to run this water line so quickly is because all that work had only been accomplished over the past two years that I was here initially, and then the following four years that I've been here on this board. I saw what the potential was, I saw what we needed to do, and I committed to the citizens both times I was elected to make this happen. Well, I need some extra time to make it happen, because it's not gonna happen in two more years. I need that four years to finish up, and that's what I'm asking for. I didn't really want to run this time, because this is not fun, folks. If y'all think this is fun, get you some of this sometime. Because it's hectic, it's tense, it's not easy on your family, it's not easy on your children, it's not easy on your grandkids, because it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of stress, and, you know, it's expensive, because I've never accepted one campaign contribution, I've always paid for my campaigns out of pocket. So when you start doing that, and you start running ads in the paper and ads on the radio and buying billboards and everything else, it runs up real quick. So, if I didn't feel like I had to do this, I wouldn't be doing it. But I feel like it's got to be done if we're gonna get this completed, because I really feel like that this is the future of our county right here. If we get this infrastructure in place, then we won't have to worry about building schools, we won't have to worry about taking care of our county departments, it will take care of itself with the increase in tax revenues. So I ask you to vote for me, if you hadn't voted for me already, go out and vote, if you're gonna wait till the last day, make sure you go early, because I think it's gonna be a pretty good turnout. Thank you.
Well, I want to say thank you too for being here and for watching and listening. Government is a very important part of our life, and sometimes, we like to say, "I really want government out of my life." But, when we're in a democracy, we all need to be a part of it and to participate. I learned a long time ago that, being a part of a community, you have a responsibility, not just to yourself, but to others around you. And, as a county commissioner, I promised to bring bold, positive leadership to this position, but also to listen and to bring people together in relationship, so we can collaborate and cooperate and communicate. And that's what we've done. My experience in Wisconsin, being in the legislature for twelve years, taught me another very important lesson. Not one person can get everything done, not one person can get anything done. It takes cooperation, it takes a team. And folks, I truly believe that the team that we have up for reelection, Mr. Edmonds and Mr. Green and myself, if you want to see positive movement, the changes that we've made in the last four years continue to go forward, then please vote for us. It's an honor to serve you, and I hope that I will continue to have that honor, and I ask for your vote on May eighth.
Well, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Salisbury Post, Catawba College, Dr. Bitzer for his time, all you folks for coming out, everyone at home that may be watching on the TV. Thank you so much for your interest in this county commission race. The six of us up here all have the best interest of this county at heart. Some of us have ideas to do things one way, some of us have ideas to do things another way. None of us want to go backwards. You hear the ads, you've seen the mailers come out, that we're moving the county backwards twenty years, none of us are moving backwards, we're all moving forward. If we're not moving forward, we're standing still, and if we're standing still, we're moving backwards, because we're getting left behind. We want to move this county forward. We have needs, everyone in this room has needs, and we want to supply those needs, we want to help this county to prosper, we want everyone in this room to be prosperous, we want everyone in this county to be prosperous and to live healthy and safe lives. I've seen a need, and I decided to get involved. I've told my daughters, who are twenty-one and nineteen years old, that if you want to make a difference, get involved in your local politics and your local government. John, I hope one day that you will be able to do that also, because that's how you can make a difference. The further out you get, the less impact you have on your local community, and this is where we can have the biggest impact on you folks' lives. So I hope on May eighth, if you haven't already voted for me, that I can have your support. Mike Julian, May eighth, thank you.
Well, I hope that you have listened tonight and have found what you were looking for, but I hope that you understand that the county is in very good financial shape. Now, we have schools that we know need repairs, many of them, as we found out, are, forty percent of them are old. We are now paying the schools each year more money than they've ever received, but they need money to keep up these old facilities. From two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, we've increased our fund balance by ten million dollars. The National Bond Rating Service says we're in the best financial shape ever, and improved our rating to eight-eight plus. All county-owned buildings have been re-roofed or will soon be re-roofed, that's all those nineteen acres of roof. Unemployment is, some say four point six, some four point one. We're almost at full employment, but we need twenty-first century jobs to improve current household incomes. Who do you want to recruit those companies? We are fortunate to have our public schools, Livingston College, Catawba College, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. To recruit twenty-first century jobs, we must have a skilled workforce. Tell all your friends, John, we do want to work with the schools to see that our children receive this training. We have known for years what a great place Rowan County is, we looked, we took part in a rebranding, and one of the things that we found out, that we were too critical of ourselves, people from outside of Rowan County had a better feeling for Rowan County than we do.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Edmonds.
Well, it's been one of my very highest honors to represent you these past three and a half years. Got to tell you, I've poured my heart and soul into this job. To be completely honest, at times, I've struggled with a high cost of serving. My two youngest kids have graduated from college since I took office, and all three of our children will have married and moved away during my time as a commissioner. Time with my sweet wife is at a premium, my wonderful office staff has been under immense pressure because I'm out of the office most of the time. This has certainly not been easy, but to be fair, I asked for it. While it's been hard work, this is not rocket science. Build strategic relationships, be nice to people, and show them respect. It turns out that the do unto others thing actually works, who knew? We've sat down with investors and asked them, "What do we need to do to get you here?", and now we're working hard to systematically make those improvements. We've committed to helping every municipality succeed, because only then can our county truly succeed, and we've made it a priority to offer hope and opportunity to those among us who need it most. This election presents a very clear choice, we can continue building momentum, uniting our community, working together on a positive, shared vision, while always expressing thankfulness that all we've been blessed with, or we can go backwards, divide one another and ignore our blessings, choosing only to focus on our problems. There's not a day that goes by that someone doesn't pull me aside and say to me that they've never been so optimistic about our direction, our potential, and our future. Rowan County, be encouraged, we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in thanking the candidates here this evening. And on behalf of WSAT, the Salisbury Post, Rowan County Chamber of Commerce, and Catawba College, I would like to thank you for joining us this evening as well. As a reminder, early voting goes through 1:00 p.m. this Saturday, May fifth, with the primary election day being Tuesday, May eighth, with the polls open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Thank you for joining us, and we hope to see you at the polls.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's have another round of applause to Dr. Bitzer for moderating.